It's 7:00 PM, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Regular Common Council of the City of Port Jervis, January 12, 2015. Leading us in the pledge tonight are Jack Decker and Justin Meerdink of Troop 68.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you gentlemen. Pretty interesting, when my father started this, my oldest was just able to be a scout to do the pledge, and that's my youngest now just getting ready to get out. I'm gonna open the public hearing of Local Law Number 1 of 2015 first, this is to repeal the tax cap override of Local Law Number 10 of 2014. We did not go over the tax cap, so we have to repeal that law that we created in 2014. If there's anybody that would like to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and where you're from. This is specifically for the public hearing. Not hearing any, I'd like to have a motion to close the public...
Motion by Mr. Bell.
Second by Mr. Belcher to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
What is this for? Anything?
No, not yet. Just the tax cap override.
Go over it?
We're abolishing that tax cap override that we had for 2014. We didn't go over it.
Last year, the law was adopted to override the tax cap, the city didn't go over the tax cap, so in order for the residents to get potentially their refund back, we have to appeal that law for the state, so that's what we're doing this evening.
It's not over this year.
No.
Stay updated.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried. We'll start with our youth report, Mr. Michael Conklin.
Good evening. The Port Jervis High School Guidance Department has released the January 2015 schedule for agents and local exams. Be sure to mark your calendar of these important dates. These will take place from January 26th to the 29th. Please check with guidance for specific testing times and dates. The Yankee Doodle Circus will be at the Port Jervis High School Friday, February 6th. Come out to enjoy the fun and support the junior class. At the middle school, Mrs. Weevil and Mr. Kenniston's class got to fly the Port Pride Penguin flag flown at the Adelie Penguin Breeding Colony in Cape Royds, Antarctica. Cape Royds invited schools to submit flags representing Penguins over Antarctica with their school logo. The flag was flown this December near the expedition hut. After the flag is signed by all members of the expedition team, it will be returned to the Port Jervis Middle School. ASK and HB are excited to celebrate No Name Calling Week, January 23rd and the 19th. Along with schools all over the United States, No Name Calling Week is an annual week aimed at ending name-calling of all kinds and fostering dialogue about ways to eliminate bullying in our community. HB's Family Fun Night will be on Friday, January 30th. They'll be showing the movie Frozen. Showtime is 6:00 PM and there'll be a big sale for snacks. Admission is $3 for children and free for adults. Elsa will also be there making an appearance, and you can get your picture taken with her for $2 a person. ASK is turning back time to celebrate the 80th Day of School. Get your best 80s clothing together for Monday, January 26th. Also, congratulations to the ASK Performing Arts Club for their amazingly successful Breakfast with the Characters of Beauty and the Beast Junior last Saturday, January 10th. It was an amazing event that received huge community support. Join them at the performances on January 23rd at 7:00 PM and January 24th at 2:00 and 7:00 PM. The Port Jervis Recreation Department's youth basketball program is doing great. The first night game will be held this Wednesday night at the ASK Gym. Tuesday, January 13th at 7:30 PM in the high school cafeteria, the next Board of Education meeting will be held. And finally, there will not be any school on Monday, January 19th in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Mr. Siegel, do we have a senior report?
No, we do not.
And Mr. Belcher is going to report on veterans?
Yeah, yesterday, the tri-state naval ship, BFW 7241, and their ladies auxiliary held their awards ceremony for the Patriotic Pen and Voice of Democracy essay contest. They had a lot more entries than they've had in previous years, and the winners in the Voice of Democracy were, first place was Allison G. Busavie, second place Robert Cowell, third place Alexandria Thalen, and fourth place Nicole Camorzi. In the Patriotic Pen, 7th grade winners were first place Olivia Stansfield, second place Elizabeth Van Horn, and third place Angelina Paul Jerusalem. 8th grade winners were first place Bethany L. Reinhardt, second place Emma Corghill, and third place Todd Pfister. We want to offer our congratulations to all the winners. And John Pagano was the...did the VOD essay winners, and Stephanie Mobley of the ladies' auxiliary did the patriotic pen essay winners. And I think that the whole thing was a great thing for the kids, and the subject of the essays was what do veterans mean to me? And it made all the kids aware of just what the veterans do. Thank you, Mr. Decker.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, it was myself, Mr. Siegel, and Mr. Belcher attended, and it was definitely, a few of the kids, really some of the phrases, also being veterans, some of the things that they talked about were really moving, and even George had said, you know, some of these words were pretty powerful to me, and they were also to me. And at such a young age, there's a boy there that won in 8th grade, I told him, I said I was just really blown away by his speech. And the presentations, some of these kids don't get up to public speak often, and they got in front of their peers, in front of their parents, in front of their family, in front of strangers to do these presentations, so they all did a great job. Thank you. Next up is public comment, anybody can speak about any subject. They have a five-minute limit, please come to the podium, state your name and the address that you live in, if you don't live in the city, or not your address, but the ward that you live in, and if you don't live in the city, where you live.
My name is Margaret Calvin, and my address is 123 North Orange, but we also own the house at 39 Glass Street. And my question is about the storage fee. What about the residents of the City of Port Jervis that aren't on the city's storage system? Do you think it's legal to charge somebody a fee for something that they don't get?
What we need, and this is a simple answer, all we need you to do is go to the city clerk's office, there's an affidavit that you sign, and you won't be charged with it. If you're not hooked up to it, you won't be charged for it.
I'll fee you $54.
You did, because the way the building's set up is it automatically billed to every resident, every business.
I thought senior citizens were supposed to only be paying $6 a month.
Anybody that's a star, enhanced star, excuse me, enhanced star, there are the seniors that are enhanced star.
Unfortunately, this year we don't, because to be able to get the house on Glass Street, we had to sell my house to be able to buy that one. So they're saying, oh, you have a lot of money, but you don't. Also, the water this year was absolutely terrible. For several months, I mean into October, there was times that the water wasn't fit for water near lawn, and that's about the only thing it was fit for. And I pulled several times to complain about it, it was, the water was really disgusting.
RDPW is working to address that issue. Hopefully, we're gonna be resolving it within the next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Judith O'Pelt, 4th Ward. I have another issue, but right now, Ms. Mayor Decker, you said anybody on the Enhanced Star program gets the reduction. What is the reduction fee?
$6 a month.
$6 a month rather than $18.
I am on the Enhanced Star. My bill was 18.
That's correct. $6 a month for three months.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
Yeah, if you weren't, you would've been $54.
Alright, I'm just asking, 'cause all's I've heard all along was the $6, I didn't realize it was for each month. Okay. I would like you to address the, I don't know if it's a rumor or what's going on, about Engine 6 being closed down after the 1st of the year. My son took a new member of Engine 6 to get his pager, and my son and this new member was told he does not, he won't need a pager because after the 1st of the year, Engine 6 was going to be closed down.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, it's after the 1st and Engine 6 is still there and I'm a member.
Right.
Do you know anything about it?
Who made that statement?
Who made the statement?
I'm sure the chief or anyone that's a member of any fire department knows who has the pagers and who gives them out.
But we'll have the chief address that, because it's not true.
Okay, because I know there's someone that has been wanting Engine 6 closed down since I was on the council under your father, and I'm telling you right now that I will do everything in my power and possible to see that Engine 6 is not closed down, not because my son's a member, but because it's across the river, and I'm sure Mr. Bell, who is my age or a little older...
Say thank you, Frank.
Well, we went to school together, and, okay, Frank, Mr. Bell and I go back a long ways. I'm sure we remember the flood of '55 and all the other floods, and we need a truck on that side of the river for the people in that area when things happen. So I just want to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Carol Zalek, and I live on Main Street, I believe is the 3rd Ward, and actually have three really quick things. I agree with the first lady, the water was absolutely atrocious this year, that's number one. Number two, with the weather the way it is, it seems like the 3rd Ward is like the forgotten zone, like driving down here, all these roads are perfectly clear blacktop, you go down to Ryan Street or Main Street, you just see ice, it's just a solid sheet of ice. The dirt truck goes by, he speeds by, drops a little bit of dirt, and that's the last you see of them, so we're the last people to be addressed for anything when it comes to weather-related. The second thing is also the sewer fee. How were we knowing, I mean, I didn't know we were gonna have a sewer fee. When I got my bill in the mail, I had a call, and they said, well, it was in the newspaper. Well, I don't get the newspaper, I don't read the newspaper, so how were we supposed to know? And was there ever a vote on, you know, how did this whole thing come about and how were the residents supposed to know until, some people, you know, live on a tight budget, and $54 four times a year is gonna be hard for some people who aren't on the Enhanced Star program or anything, so I was a little perturbed about that whole thing, so I'm not sure how that whole thing happened.
I'll just give you a quick answer on that. It was in the paper, in both papers, actually, three papers that are here. I do a radio show every Saturday morning, it was on the radio show. It's also on the internet, it was on our website, it was also on our Facebook page.
So we as residents, we have to search for that, instead of us just getting a little friendly reminder in the mail, hey, this is gonna happen.
Well, again, you know, a lot of people complain about the money that's spent, and when we send out even a postcard, that's additional money that we're spending, but it, you know, it's to 5,000 homes, you know, it becomes expensive.
This is my first town state hall meeting, so I'll be coming to more so that I can be informed about that.
That's great.
And then my third pet peeve, I know we're on a time limit, I'm assuming Main Street isn't a residential area, and you all know that there's a, I guess a transits or dumping station, whatever you wanna call it, that runs on Canal Street. When I bought my house there seven and a half years ago, the hours were posted the same as they are posted today, but that place operates 24/7, 24/7, and it's not just city workers that use it, there are over 100 people in this town that have keys to that, people that come in with their household garbage, landscaping trucks, whenever I called a couple years ago, well, what kind of truck is it, did you get their plate? That's not my job to monitor the dump up there. I've called Mr. Decker, I've called your office two times, and I've never gotten response from anybody. I mean, my backyard is right there, and to be waking up at, it could be any day of the year, any time of the night, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, and to be woken up by trucks coming in and out, and that loud gate that they open up just scrapes against that blacktop, you try to have a nice summer brunch or something outside of your backyard, and you can't because you constantly have traffic going back and forth. And the answer I get is, well, the city can operate it whenever they want because the city owns it. They own it for when there's floods or when there's bad weather, because that's where the sand and the salt is happening. Well, that's okay, I can live with that, but I can't live with the other 100 and something people that feel that they can go, if I wanna go up there, I have to pay a fee to go up there to dump, so why do other people have keys that can go up there 24/7? It should be operating hours, if it's a residential area, shouldn't it be run, ran in those hours that are posted?
I'll definitely look into that, and as far as my office not getting back to you, I apologize for that, I wasn't aware, otherwise I would've called you right back, but I will get in touch with you.
Yeah, it's been, like I said, it's been an ongoing problem, everybody says, you don't say, don't say, well, I'm gonna say something because I pay taxes like everybody else.
There's also private property that's up there, even though our gate is right at Canal Street, there's additional private pieces of property that are up there that private people own.
Right, but to go, they have a key and go through there 24/7?
Yeah, they have to.
I mean, how would you like that in your backyard?
They have to. It's private property.
But it doesn't say that on the sign, you know what I mean? It doesn't, when I bought my house, I bought it because I thought it was operating those hours, and now, you know, 24/7, it's not fair to me and everybody else that lives in that area.
But we'll look more into it.
If I might add, all the laws, all the changes to codes, all the fee changes are all brought up and discussed at the Codes and Legislative Committee meeting, which meets on the first Wednesday of every month, and they're brought up for several months, we don't just bring it up last Wednesday and then vote on it this Monday. We keep inviting people to come to Codes and Legislative meetings because there is a lot of work that goes on there, a lot of things that go on there, the newspaper often is not there, so they don't know about, as we start talking about it in the very beginning, so we're trying to encourage people to come, it's the first Wednesday of every month, and as I said, we discuss everything at length before we make any decisions.
So first Wednesday of every month here and at night?
Right here, yes, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not hearing from anyone else?
Hi, my name is Barry Kelvin, and I just wanna, you know, I'm proud to be a citizen, be a resident of this town, and it's really not like it used to be, you know, and it's kinda disappointed because this town really needs, they said about revitalizing the town, but it's not, we used to have theaters here, we used to have entertainment, and we used to be, my mom and dad and I, we used to sit downtown, we shopped downtown, especially during Christmas, it was really exciting at one time with the hardware store and the dress shops, and Five and Ten and New Berries and that, and it's just not like it used to be, and there's so many tents, stores that are vacant now, and I just hope that, you know, well, first of all, we need entertainment for like on a Friday or Saturday for our seniors, for everybody that enjoys music. I play banjo, and I, you know, I'd like to be able to entertain people and children in this town. I thank you for the opportunity to play at a fall college, but I'm looking for a piano player, and I would like to have a fun little band, you know, just to entertain people and children. But aside from this, we need a community center in this town, we really do, you know, and that building, you know, I mean, at one time was nice, the Palm House, but I think, you know, that would be, I really don't know any other open land in Port Jervis for a community center, only there, and even though it's a historical building, I think it could be a nice place for people, you know, they have the stage there for the summertime, but for year-round, for people to get together, especially seniors, in order for seniors to get together, they have to go maybe to Madame Morris, that, you know, over there, my mom used to go there for cards, but, and so then, but like, this is two things, I'd really like to see in town, you know, a community center for people, especially for our seniors, you know, and for anybody who wants to get together and, you know, hear music, we need entertainment. So another thing, at my mom and dad's house, I was about 10 years old when my dad and grandpa were building the house, you know, on Glass Street, 39 Glass Street, and I am very proud, you know, of the house they built, my grandpa built the house in 36 on North One Street, so that's where we lived, and we owned both houses. And I was wondering about the brook, you know, the brook there that runs from Canal Street, and it used to be an open there from where it comes out of Canal, and it used to be open, and they filled it in and out, but we still have an open brook, and it's really a mess, and I really, I'm concerned about my dad's wall. My dad, grandpa, built the house on 39 Glass Street when I was about 10, and I used to watch my dad, my dad, after working hard during the day, making about $2 an hour, my grandpa did, and working on their house, and working on other jobs, he would go down by the brook with a drop light, he would work on, with a cement mixer. One man, he built that wall from Walt's garage, where Mr. Quick used to live, to the brook, from the brook to the bridge, before the bridge, I think before the bridge was there, he did that all by hand, he put the footing in the brook by hands, with cement, bags of cement, bags, not with a trough, with a truck.
Mr. Calvin, we are working on that, that was actually something that Mr. Farr and I have already instituted for this year.
Yeah, but I'm worried about that wall because it's...
And we are, and we are too, we have FEMA, we've been waiting for, we've been waiting patiently for them, they haven't responded, so we're putting together a plan for us to work on it.
And I'm worried, I mean, because that wall kicks out and it goes in the brook.
We understand, we understand that, and as far as a community center, that's something that's in the works also.
Yeah, because, but you can imagine, my one person building that wall, I mean, it's just incredible with the work, you know, our grandparents did years ago, you know, and then my dad put in, he would feel very bad that it's not, you know, it's, you know, so I'm just wondering when it's gonna be done, you know, because that, it should be a, it should be a big, huge covelet like under Canal Street, and it should be actually filled in.
Right, and we've talked about it.
Yeah, well, I just hope they don't restore it, it's not what it needs, it needs to be filled in, because, you know, so you don't see that.
Well, we'll have, I don't know anything about engineering, we'll have engineers do all that.
It's a mess.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not hearing any, we move on to approval of the minutes of, are we doing both? December 8th and December 17th. Anybody got the date on that, December 22nd? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes on the 22nd, December 22nd? Motion by Mr. Belcher, second by Mr. Cunningham, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried, and the first December meeting. Motion to approve the December 8th minutes, Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Ritchie, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried, thank you. Committee reports, Mr. Bell, Finance and Insurance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some bills to pay, some of the larger bills, and the general water fund, Frontier Communications for the city phone lines, $3,592.86, Fisher Refineries for 2014 election costs, $18,550.28, Orange Rock and Utilities, $33,446.55, Xerox Business Services, payroll, AP, AR, software support, $21,294.70, from the Capital Fund, Island Tech, Fire Department Computer Equipment, $6,725, Recreation Engineering, White Water Permits, $1,825, total from the General Fund, $271,612.54, from the Water Fund, $40,348.84, from the Capital Fund, $9,065.17, for a total of $321,026.55. I make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Belcher to pay the bills, the Capital, General, and Water Funds, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
I have a request from our assessor, meetings and travel request. This is my annual request for approval to attend classes, seminars, meetings, and travel related to my position as assessor. I respectfully request permission to attend the annual New York State Assessors and Education Class held at Cornell, July 12th through July 17th, 2015, and the annual Fall Conference held October 4th through October 7th, 2015. Expenses have been allocated in my budget. Also, permission to attend the Orange County Assessors Association meetings, New York State Assessors Association classes, trips to Orange County Government Offices, Office of the Real Property Services of Newburgh and Albany as needed. Relative expenses have been appropriated in my budget line. I'll make a motion to approve those travels.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Wallen-Broski, to approve the assessors' seminars and travels for 2015, discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So carried.
I have a resolution to the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis regarding travel approval request. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council recognizes the need for continued training of its staff, it is hereby resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis approves the following training and travel for the Office of the City Clerk Treasurer. March 26th and 27th, GFPA Annual Conference in Albany, New York, and various regional trainings or necessary membership meetings, as they arise throughout the year with costs not to exceed the amount in the 2015 budget. I'll make that a motion.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Belcher, to approve a resolution of travel for the city clerk's office.
Opposed? So carried. And the first December meeting? Uh, motion to approve the December 8th minutes. Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Committee reports. Mr. Bell, Finance and Insurance.
Thank you, Mayor. We have some bills to pay. Some of the larger bills, and the general water fund, frontier communications for the city phone lines, $3,592.86. Mission refinance for 2014 election costs, $18,550.28. Morgen Rockland Utilities, $33,446.55. Xerox Business Services, payroll, AP, AR, software support, $21,294.70. From the Capital Fund, Island Tech, Fire Department Computer Equipment, $6,725. Recreation Engineering, White Water Permits, $1,825. Total from the General Fund, $271,612.54. From the Water Fund, $40,348.84. From the Capital Fund, $9,065.17. For a total of $321,026.55. I'll make a motion and pay the bills. Second.
A motion by Mr. Bell, second by Mr. Belcher to pay the bills. The Capital, General, and Water Funds. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
I have a request from our assessor, meetings and travel request. This is my annual request for approval to attend classes, seminars, meetings, and travel related to my position as assessor. I respectfully request permission to attend the annual New York State Assessors' Education Class, held at Cornell, July 12th through July 17th, 2015, and the annual Fall Conference, held October 4th through October 7th, 2015. Expenses have been allocated in my budget. Also, permission to attend the Orange County Assessors Association meetings, New York State Assessors Association classes, trips to Orange County Government Offices, Office of the Real Property Services of Newburgh and Albany SD. United expenses have been appropriated in my budget line. I'll make a motion to approve those travels.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Wallack Brozky, to approve the assessors' seminars and travels for 2015. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
I have a resolution to the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis regarding travel approval request. Whereas the City of Port Jervis Common Council recognizes the need for continued training of its staff, it is hereby resolved that the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis approves the following, the following training and travel for the Office of the City Clerk Treasurer. March 26th and 27th, GFOA Annual Conference in Albany, New York, and various regional trainings or necessary membership meetings as they arise throughout the year with costs not to exceed the amount in the 2015 budget. I'll make that a motion. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell, a second by Mr. Belcher, to approve a resolution of travel for the city clerk's office. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
A resolution of the Common Council to...